Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, May 7, 2024. It's 9:03 a.m. My name is Ty Mancer, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Emily Claus, Commissioners Gary Edwards and Carolina Mejia on Zoom, Acting County Manager Robin Campbell, and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. County Manager Hernandez is excused today. Public virtual attendance may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube Channel. We have a three-hour session. We'll have a recess around 10:25 or so. And first up is to review this afternoon's draft agenda.
Excuse me, Commissioner, if I may, we would like to recommend a change to the agenda this morning. This morning's agenda should have included two standing items that the Board has information on, on the first Tuesday of every month. That is a report on housing and a report on the HCP. So we would ask that you amend this morning's agenda to include those two items.
I move to amend the agenda to include those two items. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Can you oppose? Okay.
Then begin with housing.
Okay, and we will pick up then with our Keely Marino and our Housing and Homeless Services update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? Having headphone issues.
Yeah, it's good.
You're great. Awesome. I'm Keely Marino with Public Health and Social Services with an update on homeless response. One of the most, one of the best meetings I started my, this week with, which is only two days in, but it's still a great meeting, was with our local encampment resolution program. It's our, this is the meeting that we have been asked to take leadership on a couple of months ago regarding the Governor's Right-of-Way Initiative now called the Encampment Resolution Program. And over the last month or so, locally, providers, the City of Olympia, City of Lacey, and the county have been working really closely to ensure that both coordinated entry intakes into programs that are funded through the ERP process, as well as folks that are part of, that are unsheltered, that are part of the ERP program, are being prioritized appropriately into open units that are from any ERP-funded site, and that there's a clear, consistent process that satisfies the requirements of the ERP, as well as our local coordinated entry system. And it's going quite well. We have very coordinated accounting of what units are available, when they're becoming available, how many intakes every shelter provider is having per week, positive exits into permanent or permanent supportive housing, if there's any negative exits due to self eviction or any other cause that they're reporting on that. It's been an incredible, uplifting, collaborative experience in a process that has had some strife in the past. And one of the great news, the good bits of news that we heard today is that Safe Place has been part of the ERP program from the get-go. They had an outreach element that went out into the encampments to serve individuals that were unsheltered and also actively fleeing violence. It was a hotel program. They are, I believe that contract is winding down and will not be, we will not be receiving more funds from the state for that program at this time, as we understand. However, they have four remaining participants in that program, really struggling to figure out how to get them housed or how to move forward with them before the contract ran out. And this morning, we heard from Safe Place that they were able to successfully rehouse permanently or into their own housing programs or with family, all four participants. So whenever we get that news, it's four people. Doesn't sound like a lot, but four people is quite a lot, especially when they're survivors of violence. So we're just really excited to bring that news to you. Likewise, Plum Street Village, which is a City of Olympia project that is a part of the ERP funding now, is workforce, it's workforce housing in those tiny homes, as well as people wanting to work towards sobriety. That program is now up and running. It's taken some time and some adjustments to get everything in alignment. Likewise, Quinn Street Village, they're under contract with the state to reserve 30 of their beds within that tiny home village to, for ERP specifically, and that is now accepting referrals, and it's starting to have some movement. So just in that vein, in the ERP world, we're just really, it's finally moving, like some of the stuck bottleneck elements of that program are loosening a bit. And we're very excited that it's also not incongruent with our coordinated entry process. So there's some good news for you all this morning, and I'm happy to take any questions on that before moving on. Yes, Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you, Keely. I'm wondering in regards to Percival Landing and what are the next steps for that encampment?
Yes. So at this time, Olympia Mutual Aid Partners, as well as other outreach efforts, are going out into the encampments, but specifically for ERP, everyone in the canyon and Percival Creek, that whole area, is being put on the by-name list and receiving coordinated entry intakes. Olingmap is going out there four times per week for that sole purpose of making sure that there's an accurate accounting of all the people who are living in the Percival encampment, so that they will be eligible for ERP housing as it comes online. So that's happening, as well as their other programs. The, they call it the SOAP, but I'm really struggling to remember what that acronym is for. But it's another Olingmap program that's working with an adjacent encampment called the Decatur Encampment. It's on private property. However, they are working with those residents for any of the residents that would like to opt into that by-name list and therefore be placed in ERP housing units. They're including them. So it's gonna be a slower process because it's a very, it's a larger encampment. We are also anticipating another update, that there were quite a number of tents along the tracks on Henderson Boulevard and City of Olympia. That encampment is being moved today. The individuals in that encampment are being moved along. I know that City of Olympia and other outreach efforts have been really working with those individuals to hopefully get them into coordinated entry, find out if they're part of the right-of-way at any time, if they were ever on a by-name list, to help them get to their next spot. I do anticipate that we will see an increase of those campers, most likely impacting Percival, most likely impacting other encampments like the Jungle. So, but that is happening today, and then heavy equipment is coming onto the tracks tomorrow to clear it and clean it. That was like a bigger answer, but.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, Keely. And I just want to, again, just give you big props on your, on your management of the ERP group, and just really kind of second what you said in terms of the collaborative nature that there is in that group now, and the willingness for partners to share. So thank you for, for, for that.
My pleasure.
Any questions? Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Keely.
Oh, just the last is that we're looking forward to this Regional Housing Council meeting this week, where we'll be presenting all of the award recommendations for renewal projects, as well as cold and hazardous weather. So those will be coming before the RHC tomorrow for approval, as well as some capital projects. So, yeah, that's it. I'm done now.
Um, on the Henderson, the, is that being, are folks being moved there because of, it's like by railroad tracks? Is that, or is there some other reason that's motivating the reason that that one's being, you know, disbanded, or however you say it?
My understanding is the reason why it's being fast-tracked, so to speak, is that a lot of the area where there are actual campers are on private property, and those private property owners came together and came to the City of Olympia and got the railroad on board as well. So that's why it's, it's more swiftly being addressed.
Okay. Yesterday at WASC, they presented, the folks from the state presented the state's draft five-year homeless response plan, and each county obviously has to have its own corresponding one. And can you tell us where we are in our cycle of that update?
Absolutely. So I have read the guidance. We're also going to have Oliver Crane from Department of Commerce come to the Associated County Human Services Homelessness and Affordable Housing Meeting this week to present to that group as well. Our plan in, so far in our office, is that we are going to engage the Lived Experience Housing Steering Committee. So again, to center their part in this process of planning. And at this time, we're going to have monthly meetings with a number of those members to kind of get them up to speed to launch full planning measures in September. So in the local plan draft guidance, they do call for having posted every possible way that the public or anyone can join in on any of the planning sessions, so we'll be working on that schedule. There's also a public hearing requirement this year. There's a requirement in local plan guidance that we work with the Growth Management Act process to kind of lockstep the housing chapter in that process with the five-year plan. So it's pretty, it's a much more robust requirement coming from the state, and we're just getting that conversation going. But we're gonna start just getting the Lived Experience Housing Steering Committee up to speed, so they can be a part of it.
And what's our timeline for like having to finish this whole thing and produce a product?
The deadline is December of 2025, so we have a good 16, 18 months to get that all squared away.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Can you, if you get a chance to talk to the state, can you tell them that the acronym ERP is taken? And you need to find something else.
I spoke to the state yesterday.
Because it's really confusing.
May I ask what the other ERP stands for?
I couldn't tell you.
Emergency Response Plan. That's what I know, Emergency Response Plan.
It is our enterprise, ERP, reporting.
Program.
It's good, ERP, but it is our huge financial system.
The whole reboot of the whole county, like, system.
And that is regularly used in all sectors.
Anyway.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Keely.
You bet.
Next up is HCP update, and I'm assuming Brett Boris is behind me. He is.
Good morning. Brett Boris, Development Services Manager for Community Plan Economic Development. I believe you have the update in front of you. As you can see, and by guidance of the Board, we have compared 2023, kept it on the list, and then updating 2024 throughout the first quarter so far. So this update is of May 1, and total HCPR applications so far is 74, which 38 applications to be reviewed and 36 applications to be completed. Fees paid and the certificate of occupancy issued is a total of 15, and properties that avoided or excluded were 13. So that means no mitigation fees paid for those projects. And applications pending payment is eight, and then we're just waiting for the developers and/or homeowners or project owners to pick up their permits. As of 2024, the Olympia Pocket Gopher has, we have received mitigation for the Olympia Pocket Gopher, a total of six applications, to 90 Pocket Gopher 2, Yon Pocket Gopher East 8, Yon Pocket Gopher North 7, Yon Pocket Gopher South 9, Oregon Spotted Frog Screening was 18, and Oregon Vesper Sparrow was four, and so far in 2024, there has been no review and/or application or mitigation paid for the Taylor Checkered Spot Butterfly. Excuse me, I always ramble on that one. I'm available for any questions if you have any questions.
Brett, what does HCPR stand for?
HCPR is the formal acronym for the review, so it's Habitat Conservation Review, and that is the application that they submit.
And then what, what triggers them being in that category? Is that somebody does a preliminary screen and sees that their project is an overlay of gopher soil or one of these species soils, or what is it that puts it into this bucket and then has, triggers the review?
So using Geodata, it shows whether or not a property has more preferred or less preferred soil, and applications are received and/or required based off that, specifically for the Pocket Gopher. Geodata also has information regarding the other species, such as the Frog Screening Area and the Butterfly, as well as the Sparrow.
So just, just looking at where the project is on the map, and now say, okay, you're in HCP review status, and then you go through this process?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next up will be the first item on the printed agenda, which is to review this afternoon's draft agenda, meeting called to order at 2:00. Budget leaves to be led by Commissioner Mejia. Approval of the agenda, a presentation, which will be a proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week.
So the proclamation this afternoon is to recognize public service. The proclamation is in your packet and added to the proclamation list. This afternoon, we will have Maria Ponte here to do a brief presentation, and also Jennifer Walker will be here from Public Works.
Okay. Any questions on that? Opportunity for the public to address the Board. County Manager update. Anything expected to be reported?
At this time, no.
Okay. Consent agenda includes items 3A through 3J. So we'll start with 3A, Proclamation for WASC Executive Director Eric Johnson Day.
This is the proclamation that was requested, recognizing Eric Johnson, who is our WASC Executive Director. We are recognizing him on, and congratulating him on his retirement.
Is this proclamation drafted by an external source? Hold on a sec. Yeah.
I believe it was drafted by WASC.
Questions? And this will just be approved through the consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay. Assuming no questions there, we'll go to 3B, Public Works Resolution to Move Petty Cash Funds.
Good morning, Teresa Wall. I'm Fiscal Manager, Public Works. We talked about this last week. This is just a, we have two change funds in our office for utility customers when they come in and pay by cash, and this just moves $600 and $900. There's no change in the dollar amount, and it's just a technicality to move these to the newly created funds due to the utility consolidation.
Any questions for Teresa on the item? No? Looks like we're good. Thank you. County Treasurers here for the next several items, which are tax titled properties. Morning, Treasurer Gabbin. I'll let you summarize here what we've got.
Yeah, so these are tax titled properties, which we're trying to get back onto the tax rolls. The first five of these are in a small development that's out off Cutoff Road called Deschutes Village. It was primarily developed as a camping vacation. There's a couple of cabins in this development. There's no water available, no sewer or anything like that. These five properties. So we had, there was somebody that bought a property in there that came to talk to us about these tax titles, and then we got an application from the gentleman whose name is in the documents, James Dollstrom. And the guy who originally approached us said, oh, I know him. He's a friend of mine. I just let him buy them. And then after we got the negotiation done with Mr. Dollstrom, an adjacent property owner called us and said, hey, we own, you know, we got a cabin on that property, and we'd like to think about buying it. And I explained to her, you know, what tax title is, and that we'd already had these with, these negotiations with Mr. Dollstrom. And she said, okay, I just thought it'd be a lark to own them. So yeah, go ahead and let him buy them. A prior owner at some point had the idea of turning these five properties into a fishing pond. And so he excavated, he or she excavated, I don't know who it was, and they filled with water, but apparently the person didn't understand the need to flush out the water every once in a while for healthy fish. And so that never came to fruition. That neighboring property owner that called me said, there's a couple of beavers that live there now, so I would like to sell these to Mr. Dollstrom for the negotiated prices. The sixth one is out in the Boston Harbor neighborhood, and it is being purchased by an adjacent property owner. It's landlocked. There's absolutely no access to it without crossing the purchaser's property to get to it, so.
Is this the one that we talked about last time?
Yes.
And then there's a seventh one, right?
No, I think it's just six today.
Okay, well, there's a third purchaser. This did, there's another, if you look at item H.
Well, H is different.
That's the Boston Harbor, being purchased by the Shepherds.
G does not say James Dollstrom. It says Parker Dolliv.
Okay, so that is the friend of Mr. Dollstrom, owns a property across the street from where these five are.
So how much are we getting?
I didn't total it. I'm sorry.
Well, just give me an idea. What are you getting for a lot? Public probably wants to know if we're selling property.
So the first one, price of the property is 500, the total transaction. About $1,000, $963. Second one is the same. Third one is the same. Fourth one is the same. Fifth one is the same. So those are all in that one neighborhood, and then the Boston Harbor property is 1,500, with a total transaction price of $1,963.50.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
He's getting the budget amendment, right? A couple more things?
Yeah, spend more money.
Items I and J are auditor. So yes, they're reading now. Voucher list. Any questions for the County Manager? And let's move to item 4A, Setting a Public Hearing for Animal Control-Related Fees and Charges.
Nicole's currently in a ERP meeting.
Well, which ERP are we talking about now?
Yeah, exactly. Actually, EPM. Yeah, exactly, actually E P M, but that's a whole new acronym. So this item, I'll cover this for her. This item is taking the fees out of the current Thurston County Code and allowing the board to establish them by resolution. The action also adopts the resolution establishing the fees that are established at rates that match the cities that animal control works with, so that all our jurisdictions are charging the same fees.
Questions on this one? Pretty simple. If you look at the red lines, it's not, there's not much to it. Okay, then let's go to five A, Subconsultant Contract with Washington Water Trust, CPET item. Come on up, CPET. Introduce yourselves and tell us, remind us what this is about.
Yeah, Ashley Wright, Community Planning Manager, CPET.
I'm Brian Benjamin, Associate Planner, CPET.
So this is the subconsultant contract, unique partnership for us to conduct field work and data analysis for the Washington Water Trust. We partnered with them essentially to get a stream flow restoration grant. And so this is just carrying out that grant.
Yep, I remember this from last time. We're doing work for them.
We're doing work for them. We've got an awesome team that's recognized for their ability to do for field work and data analysis, so.
Questions?
So we're doing work for them and how much do we get for doing the work for them?
Up to seventy thousand dollars.
Up to? Depends on the work, right?
West streams specifically? Okay.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thanks for making.
Public Health and Social Services, six A, Contract with Community Youth Services with Homeless Services Emergency Funds. Keely's back.
Oh.
Go ahead, Keely, give us a.
Yes, so again, Keely Mariner with Public Health and Social Services. So this is a contract coming before you to provide funding through the homeless services advisory boards, homeless services emergency fund to do some really necessary repairs on the showers at Rosie's Place. And Rosie's Place is a shelter for youth and young adults experiencing homelessness. During the daytime, they have drop in hours and case management for people between the ages of twelve and twenty-four. And overnight, they have a shelter program for young adults between the ages of eighteen to twenty-four. Those showers are used all day, every day. They highly utilize, there's only two of them. And all of, they've gone beyond just routine maintenance and they've had to basically almost remodel those bathrooms. They need to remodel those bathrooms, which is crucial because young people need access to hygiene, health and hygiene that is real specific to serving youth and young adults. There are some places where you can access showers, but a large draw of Rosie's Place is that it is a youth centered space for them to get their needs met, including hygiene. So they're asking for twenty-three thousand one hundred dollars. That is to spend eleven thousand dollars per shower, thirty-two showers, like I said, with a five percent contingency in case there's any unforeseen costs with that with that remodel. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
How much money do we usually keep in that homeless fund?
The emergency fund is a two hundred thousand dollar set aside and that fund is reset on September one. So no, there has been, there have been no other funds that have gone out from that to date.
And where do those funds come from?
Those are the document recording fees. So it was House Bill twenty-one sixty-three, now with the legislation in in twenty twenty-one, it's House Bill fifty-three eighty-six. They combined all the document recording fees, both local and state into one fund, which is called fifty-three eighty-six. So they're specific for homeless services.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Keely on this item? Nope, thank you. All right, next up, just writing here. Public Works Awarded Master Contracts for Furnishing a Supply of Various Asphalt Materials.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mike Loman, Road Operations Manager of Public Works. In March of this year, the board approved a call for sealed bids to furnish road operations with various asphalt materials. On April eleventh, three bids were received and all bidders submitted reasonable unit rates to be considered in the evaluation of individual purchase orders. Public Works is requesting to award master contracts to all three vendors. Granite Construction Company of Everett, Lakeside Industries Incorporated of Olympia, and Miles Resources LLC of Puyallup. The master contracts will be for zero dollars. Funds will be obligated from the road fund budget at the time a purchase order is issued to the vendor that has available supply and at the lowest price. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have about this.
Yes, Commissioner Abrams.
And the cost of those materials, the kind of the inflationary costs, I guess, what purpose that?
Actually, this year for our two most popular items, our prices remain stable and actually gone down a little bit for another item. I think that's due to the competition we're seeing by working through this process and getting those annual contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Mike. See any other questions? Last business item is Public Works seven B, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Washstop U S one oh one Schneider Creek Project. Tim, is this you? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners, having a little trouble with my computer here, sorry for that. This is an item that was first introduced last week. It's it's a resolution calling for sealed bids and authorizing the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the Washington State Department of Transportation, U S one oh one Schneider Creek Stormwater retrofit project, that's a mouthful. The project is in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Public Works budget and on the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine capital improvement program. The stormwater retrofit project is designed to address water quality, improve water quality for approximately four acres of high-traffic roadway. The treated stormwater will be conveyed to an outlet structure with energy dissipation to reduce the bank erosion that is occurring. The outlet will discharge to Schneider Creek and Eld Inland. Similar to how we charge stormwater fees to our own county roads, DOT is charged an annual stormwater assessment of roughly two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Per statute, the DOT fees are then used to mitigate impacts of state right-of-way stormwater runoff to meet the objectives of the local stormwater utility. This is the second of three stormwater projects either completed or listed on the stormwater capital program. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
You're done, sounds like we're good, Tim?
Thank you.
Okay, that would wrap up this afternoon's agenda. We have our standing items and we will then move to Proclamations and Awards.
The Proclamations for Public Service Recognition Week and Eric Johnson Day are included in your packet. The revised proclamation for Public Service Week includes all Thurston County offices and departments and recognizes the days, weeks, and months of the other proclamations for those offices and departments that are not included on your proclamation schedule for this year. If all looks good, then we will distribute the seventeen copies of those and signatures. So that one can be sent to each office.
Get your signing hand ready.
Including all the different groups, okay? Any questions on this one? Robin, does this look better? I know you had some suggestions.
With Amy, Rob, and Leonard, we all worked together.
Okay, good job. Is that it for proclamation awards? I, just real quick, I had talked to the prosecuting attorney who's, they've been working on something for therapeutic court month, which is May. I told, you know, they had basically said, well, we, our proclamations are closed. I took that one, I took sword on that one and told him, you know, that was kind of how we structured things. And he sort of understood kind of how we structured things, which is a little different than in past years. And but I told him to send it to us for maybe we could do a recognition thing, kind of thing. Like we had that sort of middle ground and he seemed to think that might work. So anyway, we might get something and if you haven't already.
I believe I have, yeah.
Okay, well, then if you could, we could take a look at it.
And I have two right here on, ready to go.
I'll bring Bike Month back.
I got a request for Juneteenth. And then I also got a request for the fortieth anniversary of the nineteen eighty-four Women's Olympic Marathon Trials are being held in Olympia this year from May thirteenth through May nineteenth. And so there will be an event on May seventeenth where this proclamation will be presented. And so the City of Olympia is doing one and City of Tom Waters is doing one. I believe they were trying to get City of Lacey, as well as the county, to schedule one. So that that's also another request that has come in for a proclamation request. I was going to kind of see with the fortieth anniversary of the Women's Olympic Marathon Trials, if we could do something similar to what we're doing with kind of Eric Johnson is have something approved and then we can present it or, you know, I'm attending the reception, so I'm happy to present it.
And and that's on what day for the Summer Marathon?
The Women's Marathon is being held May thirteenth through May nineteenth.
So our next meeting after today is May twenty-first.
Can we add it on just today's afternoon calendar? Commissioners are in.
Your suggestion is as a consent item?
Yeah.
Similar to the Eric Johnson one?
Do we have something ready to go?
I'm working on it and I'll send it out. I'm working with the person who's getting this.
I mean, I I don't mind to sign anything or recognize, you know, my 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 hesitation's only with the with the full formal giving comments, having photos, you know, taking up about fifteen or more, you know, twenty minutes of a business meeting. Like anything short of that, I'm totally fine to do if it's reading an acknowledgement or signing a proclamation that gets approved by consent, if that's acceptable to the, you know, to the to the group that's involved. So if that's your proposal, then I'm fine with that. Okay, looks like we have enough folks to, everybody's on board to do it. Consent proclamation, we'll call it.
Okay.
Proclamation by consent only.
Throw Bike Month back in the consent calendar.
I mean, if you if you think that means meaningful to them, I mean, part of like, sometimes it's like we're spending the time to, you know, educate and do a dog and pony show, but sometimes with groups, like they're trying, I see the ones where they're trying to get.
Promotional opportunity.
And they want to get every, they want to be able to say, oh, all the jurisdictions passed the thing and they don't actually care about coming here and doing something. They want to be able to take that proclamation and, you know, just talk about it in their circles. And so I I'm happy to help in that regard, but some of them fit into that category and some of them don't, right? I don't know about Bike Month, you know, that's more, seems like more one we'd want to be educating the community about.
That's Juneteenth, the request was, an education.
Yeah.
Purpose for.
We have our holiday, but, okay, well, let's, we've got thumbs up to add. Commissioner Mihia will provide that. We'll talk about maybe next week the whatever is being proposed for therapeutic court. We can maybe frame it as a as a recognition that I, the chair or vice chair, can read. Go ahead.
I've received another request that I have not yet declined. And it's from the L M T A A A, the Louis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging to Recognize Older Americans Month. And they would like to bring members in.
And when when do they want to do that?
We could, we could potentially add it on May twenty-first.
You know, and some of these, all important, but some of these folks could come forward during our public comment period, give a little dissertation of why they're there and how important it is. It gives them some exposure and I think that's what they're looking for.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion, Tim.
Even like today, I think I've heard something about this field and track business sometime back. And I know there's some cheerleaders out there that I would think they'd want to come and make some comments in public comment time.
When is the aging, is it May?
It is the month of May.
Let's see what they send forward or something. Maybe we can get them to come make some public comment.
What's and what's the month, what is it?
Older Americans Month.
We could just compile them all into one meeting and just do one day where we celebrate everybody individually.
We might not get anything else done.
Just one proclamation day, just knock them all out for the year in one meeting.
That's not quite.
This is like, that's like in the office where they try to do all the birthdays. That didn't go very well.
What was it, Parks and Rec, when there's the one day that she schedules all his meetings because she doesn't think that day's real?
All right. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, okay, as in, then bring it forward or, yeah, moving on.
Say yes. I think that, you know, I mean, with the older, I mean, obviously, that's, things come up, like, because they're they're timed, it's a one-time thing. It's, I mean, something like that is something that we have to consider at the beginning of the year. I mean, I just feel like that one doesn't doesn't stick out. Eric Johnson only going to retire once. This race thing's happening once to, you know, we we choose the ones that are just recurring. They're not internal. Then those are the ones we kind of consider as beginning of the year, is my feeling. We make our choices and we can definitely put them on the list for what we consider next year if they're not already.
That's what I've been in for.
But we we could just suggest that the executive director of one of these organizations, they want to point something out?
Absolutely suggest that. Pull the comment, four minutes.
Takes the time element and preparation away from staff here. Puts it maybe where it should be.
It's a good suggestion.
Opportunity to highlight, it's not just a complaint to Commissioners. It's also an opportunity to highlight a community event or something going on.
Something positive for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then let's go to Advisory Boards and Commissioners.
All applications received during last month's recruitment period are included in your packet. To note that the applicant for SWAB, Richard Freed, is eligible as well. It's not noted on there.
Say that again, opposite for SWAB as well?
He is eligible, it's just not noted on the list with the others.
Oh, I see.
For the at-large vacancy, seat nine.
Okay.
Along with the eight Veterans Advisory Board applicants who are eligible. The Veterans Advisory Board reviewed applicants at the recent meeting and provided the recommendations which are noted on here. So would you like to start at the top with civil service? Take these back to review.
Before we do that, I have one question. The Veterans Board, did they, did they meet all of these folks and recommended the ones you've noted? Or did the two did not get, they come in after?
No, they reviewed all eight.
All of them, and is that how many up, like vacancies they have?
Yeah, they have six vacancies.
They have six, so they've chosen their top six. Okay, well, then go ahead and start at the top.
So for civil service, Tina Browning has applied. She serves on the Washington State Background Check Advisory Board, which has allowed her to have a basic understanding of the hiring and promotional process there. And she is eligible. And she is eligible.
Is this the one where there's only like three people on this?
Yes.
Commissioner Mihia?
I, I would like to have, you know, I, just kind of a, just a small session on like the Civil Service Commission. Again, I, for me, I, this is one of the committees that I do not know really anything about. So I would like to learn more about this committee and kind of, duh, is just as-
So we know what we're looking for.
So we know what we're looking for when we're appointing someone, right? I, um-
We have that on a list for-
We asked the HR-
So we just defer on this one till we have that present?
I, I'd rather appoint it, but, but, I mean, the, the, the short answer is, it's a committee that ensures that the processes we use for hiring folks are fair. You know, civil service rules exist to ensure that the government is hiring the smartest, strongest, hardest-working individuals that apply and not, you know, the elected officials or others. Cousins, yeah. It's a thing that was started in the, what, the 30s? Because to kind of like eliminate political grift, essentially. That's the way it used to be. You got elected and then all your best friends and supporters all of a sudden got cushy government jobs. And in the 30s, they decided that that was not a good idea. It should be based on merit. And so they sit and oversee the process. They don't actually hire, I mean, jump in if I'm wrong about anything. They don't have anything to do with that, like who gets hired. They just ensure that the, the ones that are subject to civil service rules are following them and they have a fair process established. But then they do have some, sometimes if there's a, like a disciplinary hearing, some places you'll sit, but-
A few other functions of-
Isn't it-
It's rare, rare.
But doesn't it mostly or completely apply to the sheriff's office?
Here, yeah, but other places, like if in a municipality, it would be, the fire department would be subject to it too. And then you can also choose to include people, but by statute, you have to include the fire department and the police department.
Like for, you know, for me, it's like, I don't know who's currently serving on the Civil Service Commission. I don't know kind of what, like, is there specific qualities that they need to have? And that's kind of like-
You can't have a majority of any one political party. I believe that's the only, like hardened fast rule.
And I'm not sure who's even sitting on there now, right? Like, I don't know who's serving on there and if it's going to be one of our appointments, I would rather just at least know a little bit more about it. And if the board's ready to move forward, that's, that's fine, right? I would just ask for it not to be on the consent so I can abstain from this, just because I'm-
So you said eligible, I mean, and Commissioner Fornier was reminding me of that thing about the political party, I forgot. There is, I know there is that one committee where, so with three people and two main parties, how do you not have a majority of one party?
That's a weird question, yeah.
I mean, how did you determine eligibility?
I confirmed with the staff contacts of every advisory board. Currently, one member serving on the Civil Service Commission, Jennifer Roberts, who is the Chair, their political affiliation is unaffiliated. Seat two is vacant and seat three is filled by John Martin, who's political affiliation is independent. So I believe Wayne reached out to this applicant to confirm their political affiliation. And I can get the exact information that he received.
Independent, is that considered a party? Or is that just similar to unaffiliated? I'm just curious, like if she said, I'm independent, I don't know, some people consider that a party, but kind of, I don't know if it is. Anyway, just curious.
Come back for more information.
Is there anyone that's besides Commissioner Fornier that wants to move this today?
Did you look for this person?
I, I know the person. I know the person very well, so I, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. And I understand what civil service commissions do for the most part at a high level.
I, I'm, I'm good with, with that moving ahead, but I think Commissioner Mihia wants to have a quick-
Do we know how quickly will we have that briefing that Commissioner Mihia is referencing? Is that on the schedule somewhere yet, or?
Uh, we're still working with Leonard on the list of things that commissioners have requested and-
So not scheduled yet?
It's not scheduled at this point in time that I'm aware.
It's not, but I believe it's expected to be in the next few weeks.
It's on the list.
Are, are they hamstrung in some, like how critical is this appointment for them? Are they, the two people able to do the job?
They are.
For a while?
But any, any three-person committee that has just two on it is pretty hamstrung.
Pleasure of the board.
I don't want to lose a committee applicant that is-
We don't, nobody's knocking, knocking the door down trying to get in, in a lot of these committees. So I'm with Commissioner Fornier.
I guess I, I'm with you guys, I mean, if, if they're on the Washington State Background Check Advisory Board, appointed by the governor, I don't know how we're going to find someone more qualified for what I understand this commission to be. Commissioner Klaus?
Um, well, it sounds like we have three, but I'm kind of with Commissioner Mihia on wanting more information. I didn't realize that, that there was a party component. So I'd like to know a little bit more about that before I move forward. But if we have three, then it sounds like we'll move forward. It looks like it's a good applicant, but I'm just interested in learning a little bit more, especially because the conversations about the Civil Service Commission are relatively new. Like, we didn't really start talking about this until recently. So I'd like a little bit more info before moving forward. How many, we only have the one vacancy, right?
Yes.
So because of that as well, I would want more info before calling that last vacancy.
How long has it been vacant?
Been vacant for some time.
Yeah, I think we got two different issues, alright? We've got a good applicant and they're not beating our door down. And I, I'd like to see if they'll, and then learning more about the Civil Service Commission can be done at the same time, I would say.
How often do vacancies pop up? Is this something where we retain committee members for a long time or commission members?
I believe the two currently serving have served for more than one term. The current term expiration dates are, for the city members are 2025 and 2029. This vacancy, their term expiration date is, would fall in 2027.
Are they, how long are the terms?
Six years.
I don't recall having done one of these in the last six years, so I think they're pretty stable.
Yeah, well, I would really like a little bit more info. Um, I think that this, if there was more outreach being done, I think there was like a social media post saying that we have vacancies.
We've asked, we've pushed staff to put that out a lot. And they've, they've done a fair amount of recruitment in the last couple months with our, you know, requests.
Yeah, like I said, it seems like this is a solid applicant. I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with this applicant at all. But, um, I'd like to see more than one applicant, if we could get one. But I understand we don't want to wait and like lose a potential applicant, that's really good. Um, but yeah, there's just some aspects of this that I wasn't aware of. The party affiliation is interesting to me. I'd like to learn more about who's on the commission currently. You said, what are the party affiliations for the two who are currently city members?
Independent and independent.
And this person is?
That's the information that I'll get from-
Okay. Okay, that's one thing I would like to know too, before appointing somebody, so we can have a balance.
I actually don't remember that we've had a partisan candidate on there for a long time. Most people are kind of sick and tired of party stuff when it comes to this kind of thing.
So if, if, if I voted to give more time with you guys, do we give a proposal? Or how long do we need to, what's the proposal for the delay?
I do not know, I'd have to defer to Leonard, he's-
So I have, well, if we were to add this to the May 21st agenda, which is the next, the next one.
I would be good with that.
Um, then at least I could start asking questions, right? Is that okay with the board to add it to the May 21st agenda to move this forward? Or does the board want to move forward with this now? For this afternoon?
I would like to wait till the 21st if we can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll vote to be, that's typically what we would do. Sometimes if everyone's completely agreed, we just throw it on. But I mean, putting on the next agenda is moving it forward. And then you guys have a couple weeks of meeting.
So, like-
So I'm, I'm okay with that.
For, for me, it's, I have no, like, her application, I mean, and just the fact that she has served on, like, right, the state background check advisory board member, and she was, you know, appointed to that position. And I know those state positions are, are not easy to get into. Uh, they do a very thorough check and, um, like, I, I think it's, it's a great applicant. She's, you know, lived in Thurston County, um, so I think just her resume and her application is very solid, right? I-
Well, let's just move it forward.
Yeah, so then-
On the 21st, and then you've got some time to talk to anyone about the process, or the commission itself.
When did we receive the application? April, Sunday, April 2nd?
Tuesday, Thursday, April 2nd. I've been waiting for a while, Ken.
Yeah, I mean, I, two months, is that what it would be, two and a half, something like that, sitting on an application? I, I, I don't want to lose somebody because we're, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I don't, I don't, I can't imagine somebody's out like hunting down committees to sit on and, you know, I, I picked up a different one, sorry guys, but I, I don't know, you know, at the same time. I, like, I, I'm still comfortable with it, whatever the board decides, that's fine. I just don't want to kick the can down the road too far.
I agree with that. Did we see this application out or call seeing this application on the last two meetings?
Oh, we did a recruiting period for the month of April and it closed on April 25th.
Okay, that makes sense.
For the last week I've worked with the advisory board contacts, the staff contacts.
So then technically, I mean, even though they applied on the second, if the recruiting period ended on the 25th, that's like a job posting ending on the 25th and you don't expect to get a call back until after that? I mean, it's kind of a similar concept, so even though they, she applied early, which is great, that shows that she's being proactive. But we couldn't look, if we couldn't look at the applications until the 25th, is there a reason we didn't see this on the April 30th or, uh, meeting?
I was working with the staff contacts of the advisory boards to confirm eligibility.
Okay, that sounds good to me. I would like to keep it on the 21st if we can.
I'm good with that. That's, I mean, in my opinion, that's moving it forward pretty, pretty expeditiously. Sometimes these things take, sometimes we wait months for the ag committee to, to meet or, you know, as one example, because they vet them themselves and, I mean, we've had these things hanging in fire for months.
When is the next Civil Service Commission meeting? I can find out.
Can we let Ms. Browning know that her application's going to be considered on the 21st? But-
I'm, I'm good with it, I mean, I, but I understand what a civil service commission does. You know, if there's still, you know, some, some holes there that people want to get filled in, I, I, I can understand that, but, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm fine with it.
We also have on our website, under the Advisory Boards Commissions page, there is a link to the bylaws for the, the Civil Service Commission, which would give the board a good understanding of sort of how they operate or function, if that is helpful as well.
Who's the staff contact for this? Wayne Jones.
Who, who did you say?
Wayne Jones.
And what department is that?
Human Resources.
Okay. Commissioner Mihia, good. May 21st agenda, let Ms. Browning know she's on.
Absolutely.
Alright, and that should be, we should be able to tie up every loose end by then. Next up?
Thank you. That is Kirsty Bingham, who has applied for the Historic Commission. Kirsty has a personal interest in historic preservation. She's not received many applicants for the historic preservation and have had many vacancies for quite some time, for years. Sonia Katie is the staff contact for the Historic Commission and she has confirmed that Kirsty is eligible to serve. So she would be eligible for one of the at-large positions.
So this is someone who is just new to the community, wants to get involved. Butterfly mural on State Street. Yeah, I mean, it's great to see this, the vacancies dwindling, but we still have a couple seats, so I'm good with it. Anyone else have a need for more time or? So put her on for 21st as well? Okay, um, SWAB?
Yes, Richard Freed is interested in taking ownership and vested interests in the community and has experience in hazardous material. He is eligible to serve. And again, for the vacant seat nine, the at-large position.
University of Fairness Coordinator. University of Alaska Fairbanks, that's high quality right there. Any questions or concerns about Mr. Freed? What, what kind of slot, is this an at-large slot?
Yes.
Okay. We have one slot?
There aren't, there's one at-large slot. There is a vacant District Two representative.
Okay.
She's available, but Richard resides in District One.
Okay. Folks want to move this one?
I'm, I'm good with all of them.
Okay, Kirsty's application, did you say was an at-large or was it a?
Uh, yes.
Is it not in one of the districts that are open? Oh no, those are alternates, never mind. Okay, so we're good on SWAB, put that on 21st. And then we've got Veterans Advisory Board, there's six spots, there was eight applicants and they've got six recommendations from this committee.
Yes, those are noted here. Mark Moffett has joined also to provide additional information at their meeting.
Why don't you give us a overview of what you guys did?
You bet, um, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I had nine on my list that applied.
I've received, um, six applicants in the last month and then had two previous applications that were considered as well.
Okay, there were nine that we reviewed at the last advisory board meeting. In, in overall, the, the three that were not considered did not have any community involvement, no volunteering, whereas the six that we are moving forward all have, have participated in one aspect or another in the community. Two of them have worked directly with the Veterans Advisory Board. Chris Mathers, she has organized our last two veterans stand downs. Uh, so she's been, she's been great in not even being a part of the board, but she organized those, without her, we wouldn't have been able to put those together. And then Tom Russell Tuddy, he's come to three of our advisory board meetings this year, uh, trying to educate himself on the issues that we have, so he, he's been involved. And there was one other person, I think it is Poe Leofau. He has worked with our Chair on other community, um, projects in the community, mainly with shelters. So that, that was the, the mindset of the board when they reviewed these, what kind of involvement have they had in the community? One thing to note, by RCW, the majority of our members have to be parts of a nationally recognized veteran- of a nationally recognized veteran service organization. None of our applicants are at the moment. But all nine that are current members are, so we will still have that balance. One of the members that we'd like to move forward, Ryan Hickerson, he is in the process of, uh, being, uh, joining the BFW, Veterans of Foreign Wars.
Questions for Mark? So will this close all the open seats?
Yeah, bye.
Good. I see this list getting way smaller.
Yeah.
Does the board members like to advance the six that are recommended by the Veterans Advisory Board? I'm good with advancing everything.
Okay.
Sounds like we have consensus to move the, uh, recommended candidates forward to the twenty first. So how about a nice, long consent agenda of the board members?
Well, I mean, if we're moving the rest of them, right, I guess, I would be okay with moving forward with Tina Browning. I, I.
Well, I'm, I said put them all in for the twenty first. Do you want to move, stick them on today?
Oh, you're sticking them all to the twenty first?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I thought you said you were sticking them on today, so I was like, okay. Yeah, that's fine. I was like, oh, well, if you're gonna be sticking them all today, I might as.
I mean, just, it just, it's just like the next agenda to bill rather than try and go back and fix, you know, if there's not.
I'm sorry. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Then we're up to.
Thank you.
PIO check-in. Okay. You guys went out and took a tour and filmed stuff out at the prairie the other day. You want to share about that?
Uh, yeah, so Devin is working on the video for the grazing. Devin went out there, um, and I was, I will update that when he gets a draft. He said it was really fun.
Yeah, it was a beautiful day, we got really lucky. And, uh, the folks that showed up to get interviewed did an excellent job and staff did a great job. Very cool.
He's working currently on editing that video, so once it's ready, welcome.
Awesome. It's in the works. Commissioner items, who should we hear?
Thank you. I have two. I guess I'll start with an easy one is if you apply to a WASAC, uh, committee, please let me know, uh, before next week, um, as we will be discussing this at the board of directors meeting. And so I know Commissioner Menzner has applied, uh, re-applied for the sentencing guidelines commission. I've applied to this county road administration board and also the state board of health. Has anyone else applied to any of the WASAC commissions?
I didn't apply to, I saw it listed on the WASAC commissions, but it's a state commission for the, the left pension board.
Okay.
Sometimes WASAC makes the appointment.
Yeah.
And then you have to be.
One applicant for that.
You have to be voted on by the, I, I, I'm like chasing my tail because like I just got appointed by the senate from the last appointment, but now the WASAC thing is up, so I'm back having to reapply for WASAC even though it's just like the never-ending merry-go-round between the governor, legislature and the, and WASAC. I didn't apply.
Okay, so one there is.
You're constantly applying or waiting for approval or, I, I, I don't know. So, anyway. So check that because you may have to get WASAC board to send you to the governor.
Okay.
Versus a straight application to the governor, they're all different.
I directly applied through the governor's office and then it shows that there's one applicant.
Oh, no, so then, no. Uh, if you apply directly through the governor's office, then you're not the WASAC appointment.
Okay.
There's a difference there, so I'll be sure and mention that at WASAC. Just because Washington, the association is the one who sends up the names and says these are, are candidates. And, um, the governor's office did that with the homeless advisory board and I know Eric reached out and about that one.
So you're, you're seeking an independent slot from WASAC?
I mean, it says that there's a county official slot. Vacant for the, the left pension board.
Interesting, they usually go through WASAC on that.
Yeah.
I, I think it would be good to put in an application through WASAC specifically for the appointment because it likely will go to.
They closed yesterday.
The WASAC board.
So there, there's actually.
Yesterday, okay.
But let Eric know that you had applied through the governors and, uh, he'll, he'll leak you in and.
Because there's actually two different kinds and I'm on one of each. One is, it's a WASAC seat, so when the, so WASAC basically selects you and then it's just a rubber stamp.
Yeah.
By whoever. Then there's another one where it's a governor's appointment, but WASAC makes the recommendation. So WASAC will just basically, whoever applies that, you know, they'll just forward those names and then you'll be vetted by the governor's office and they'll actually select, um, and that's different. So, um.
And I'm not sure which one this, this one is.
If it's the former, you have to kind of like lobby the WASAC board or maybe, you know, either write something in or sometimes appear on the Zoom and make a statement or something. If it's the other one, you don't because WASAC board will generally, just any commissioner that's, you know, that meets the qualifications, they'll just give the name forward. But it depends on if it's one of those buckets, bucket A or bucket B.
I'll find out, I'll connect with you later on on that.
It was a May meeting, right, for May something?
Yeah, so, uh, the meeting is, um, May fifteenth. So I will not be here the afternoon of the fifteenth because I'll be at the WASAC board of directors meeting.
That's a Wednesday? Is that at the retreat?
Yeah. You'll be there for, and then you'll, LSC is, the legislative steering committee is next, yeah.
And that's, is that a Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday afternoon.
Okay.
Okay. Um, uh, so that was one item, so sentencing guidelines and the, uh, pension one? Okay. Let's see, um, then I have, um, so the board will remember when we were having, um, there were some issues with the ag advisory committee where it was just kind of, there almost seemed to be a disconnect in previous years. I talked with a previous county commissioner, Karen Frazier, and I was asking for her advice on like, you know, how do you like, and she recommended, she was like, what we used to do back in the day, we used to have farm tours, right? So the, those ag advisory members, right, would, uh, you know, set up a day where we would go and kind of tour their farms and it connected basically commissioners to, uh, our local farmers, but it also connected us, like, to the issues that they're facing and like, you know, just having that overall, like, policy discussion. Our ag advisory is in a much better place now, but, uh, you know, it was something that I was like, it would still be nice to do. And so, uh, Jennifer Colvin has, uh, been working with the ag advisory committee and really setting up a farm tour for, uh, for the board and, um, they have some potential farms set up that will, like, showcase the range of agricultural, uh, that we have in the county, which I think is pretty cool. And so they, um, I have asked Leonard, right, to kind of set some time with Amy to kind of schedule that. But it's going to really take, um, most of the day. Uh, so just wanting to know if the board is interested in moving forward with this. I think it's something really, um, great that we really should take advantage of and it's something that previous boards used to do back in the day and I would like to kind of pick it back up again. Especially because there is buy-in from the ag advisory board as well.
I think it's a great idea. I also want to say that I, what is it, the eighteenth? Is that the date that?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth, the Colvin Farms having an open house, um, that I would encourage folks to go to and they've, they've got a really, there's a really good band playing on the eighteenth. Eighteenth or nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Sunday, the nineteenth?
Sunday, the nineteenth.
Noon to, noon to two. Or actually, it's longer than that, that's when we're playing. Do you want to hear bluegrass?
That's out of the bag. It's my plan.
I already bought my burgers. I'll be there.
I think it's good, I, we, we probably would want to sacrifice maybe one of our Wednesday or Monday work session days because to get us all scheduled, I mean, it's going to be Thursdays and Fridays. I think it's going to be, I, I don't have a full day usually there, but, but if we could, you, you know, sacrifice one of our Wednesday.
It would be cool to throw in a tour of the ag park as well. Cause that's.
Yeah, I'd see that.
I walked through that the other day and it's pretty incredible. And it all ties together.
I know that I've seen, uh, email from someone who's working on that, so I'm gonna say what the thoughts are.
From, I believe, just one, two commissioners that they're interested in so far. And so this week I will reach out to Jennifer Colvin.
I guess just a show of hand who's interested, right? That way Amy can have the correct.
Well, I, I would be interested, I just don't know if I need it. I was born and raised on a farm, I'm still on a farm. And.
In the barn, actually born in the barn.
You know, you have to set priorities as time comes up and when, when something comes up, uh, if it matches, I'd love to, but I just, uh.
Don't plan around your schedules, but you're saying.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, well, that works. Okay. Something that came up yesterday that I'm looking at Rob, you were on that WASAC call, right? I saw you with, and were you there at the very beginning when they were talking about that Medicare?
Yes.
Medicaid's.
Rob was hearing from me via text message.
Yeah, you have to apply by June first and everyone's like, there's no reason you wouldn't want to apply because you can get, you can get our jail expenses reimbursed.
Medicaid.
For people that are on Medicaid that are in the jail. But, but they started, they finally passed, we've been lobbying for this, um, and they passed it, but you have to like apply to, and they're gonna pick certain counties.
Yeah.
I don't, I couldn't quite get the whole thing of it. Takeaway was, we should be applying by June first.
Looks like there, uh, the, it would be the state applying for a Medicaid waiver.
Correct, this, this state is, will be applying for an eleven fifteen waiver that allows them to, uh, utilize some of the Medicaid dollars to expand coverage for inmates. The issue right now is that they're currently looking at just the last ninety days when the majority of the population really is only there for thirty days. And so we're trying to, a separate effort, trying to see if there's a way to split it so that we can get coverage for inmates in the beginning. More information is in the printer queue, when the printer was down yesterday. So I have it sent there and I don't have it.
You guys are on top of it, I just want to make sure everybody heard, somebody heard it that understands it better than me what needs to be happened.
To be in the cohort, to be a part contributor for twenty twenty-five implementation, we need to apply.
So certain medical services that we're, we're providing to folks in the jail, we can apply to get the money back. If they're Medicaid eligible, so that's just money in hand, really, because we've got those expenses.
Forward, even just for the last ninety days on a reentry is a huge.
I just think there just needs to be a little bit of coordination between who's going to submit it. Is it, you know, um, gonna be us or, or?
Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office and so.
Chief Datas or someone.
I know that's what kind of, uh, me and Rob are discussing via text message yesterday is.
So we should be getting additional information on that too.
Correct.
Okay, that was my only commissioner item. Anybody else?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Um, there were a number of things I attended that I'll report on later this afternoon, but as far as things to bring back to the board, um, I had a meeting last week with Sarah Hawk and Robert, uh, Assistant County Manager Campbell and County Manager Hernandez also attended. And we discussed a couple of things. We talked about the, um, space needs assessment, which is going on currently, I believe, or will be starting soon. And, and that was kind of in regards to the capital facilities plan as well. We also talked about a couple of service level options. I know there's been ongoing conversations between the board and myself and Sarah regarding service levels because she wants, she wants to bring that information back and we've asked her to put some information together. So we looked at a draft of that together. And if there are any questions or if I'm missing anything, um, please let me know. If you want me to fill in the gaps about specific questions for the board, but if there are questions from the board that you want me to relay back to Sarah, um, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Options for what?
Yeah.
That's something we're gonna see at a later time.
Yeah, they're working on it, they have a draft. Some of the stuff which we've already talked about are like modified field services, looking at, um, reducing services, but still receiving access to the community programming, um, and they would only respond to like non-enforcement related calls. That's kind of one of the options. And it would also, we could look at like channeling, sheltering and the standard care, keeping some of those or going down to a sheltering only option, which would have its own implications, um, that I can go into if we want. But I am looking at a draft, so I want to be careful of saying anything and making it sound like it's a certain option because it's, it's just a kind of a first draft.
That would be if the board is interested in reducing our contribution to Jazzcom. So as the board requested, Sarah is preparing what options might look like, with the understanding that any reduction or plan, uh, would by our inter-local agreement have to be approved by the Jazzcom board. Also, uh, recognizing that Jazzcom does need, gonna say a decision, uh, from the board, county commissioners, on whether or not we're going to be participants because they do need to do the long-term planning for the, um, new facility that they need. So all of that is, um, for your consideration and the next Jazzcom briefing is in June and I want to say it's on June twelfth, I'm just gonna double check that.
It's which one?
June twelfth.
June twelfth, in the afternoon.
Sure, it's.
I guess, uh, I'm wondering how we can include the sheriff in, on some of these conversations because he's a big piece of how this works or does not work in the future and consequently what we may be faced with. Complaints or what, are they gonna come here? Sheriff, they're gonna come to animal control.
We did discuss that during our meeting a bit, um, in terms of like, not only relationships with the sheriff, but also Lacey, there was a Lacey staff member at the meeting as well. And so we talked about kind of how to collaborate both inter-jurisdictionally and between departments and offices that are involved, like the sheriff's office. There is, the sheriff's office does play a major role in this because depending on the service level, it would impact the services that the sheriff's office has to provide as well. And they went into some detail about that, which I can kind of go through now if we want to. Otherwise, I think the briefing will be a good opt, a good way to ask those kinds of questions and make sure that we're communicating with the sheriff as well. And we also have our next Jazzcom meeting on Monday, so I'll be able to talk more with Sarah Monday and if the board wants me to bring back any questions for her, I'd be happy to do that. Um, and then she could follow up with us on June twelfth.
I mean, we have to consider the whole thing because if we make a decision to drop service level and, oh, we're saving two hundred thousand dollars and then here comes Sheriff Sanders saying, well, I've got a thousand more calls, I need two more people and with, there, there goes the two hundred thousand, like.
Yeah.
It's.
Uh, there was actually.
Yeah, I mean. I also don't want to have a service where we're actually doing the service still. Right, where, where, where we're paying a nonprofit to do something that, or part, an NGO, whatever, you know, to do something that isn't really happening the way we expect it and then we're still doing the service anyways.
Yeah, I think there are some complexities to that situation where.
I, I, I've heard several people say that there's a personality issue at play and I don't know that I'm totally on board with that because I think it's, it's a complex issue and there's probably people that are frustrated and there isn't really a venue for, you know, those concerns to really, really get flushed out. It's like this conversation's happening in multiple different places with handpicked people and, and so I think, you know, some of the conflict.
And, and so I think, you know, some of the conflict is not entirely like legitimate and it's somewhat contrived a little.
Yeah, I think you're right, which is why I mentioned there are some complexities because you're 100% right. I've heard a lot of things from various stakeholders, including constituents and I'm trying to kind of sort through all of that because there's so much information out there. Some of it's true, some of it's hearsay and the personality thing like you mentioned. So that's why I want to be careful when we say like we're paying for services that we aren't getting because I think that.
But that's been documented.
That's true.
When they're returning money to us and they're saying, here's money back for services we couldn't provide, that's a fact.
I understand that and you're totally right. There's, if we dig deeper, which I'm trying to do, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what you're saying. I'm just saying like because I'm new at this, I'm trying to get as much information as I possibly can, which is why I've been having ongoing meetings with Sarah and trying to figure out what we can do. And she did actually include a number for the response, the calls they had to respond to that the sheriff's office would be responsible for if we went down to modified field services and it was 638 calls in 2023. So that would be a potential number to kind of go off of if we're considering what the sheriff's obligations would be if we went down in service levels. And of course that would vary, but that was just last year's number.
But it wouldn't be anything new. I mean, that's where we were last, like previously, right, until I advocated for us to go to full service. And then it was, I mean, it took a long time just because of the market for them to even hire someone. So that was still, burden was still placed on the sheriff's office, so you know, them saying that there's going to be this huge impact on the sheriffs, there, there really isn't. I mean, that's what they've been dealing with. And that's just the reality of it, right? It's this, you know, them being able to fill that position is, is something new. And them taking on, and even there was that miscommunication with TCOM even, right? On top of that where they weren't even getting the calls, so there's just all that layer to add to it, so it's, it really has taken a long time for us being, you know, paying for this full service and not getting full service, like. And, you know, the difference between the cities and, and us, the county, is that we're facing, like, we have livestock, right?
There's still a horse running around loose around tonight. Everybody cares about a zebra, but that black horse, nobody forgot about it.
And so like, that is an additional layer that we have to deal with and the fact that other counties are, they have different mechanisms as we heard already in place to deal with that and we just need to figure out like, how are we going to respond to that? Because that is a service that we're not currently providing that is being added on top of everything else to the sheriff's office as well, so I, I would like to see a breakdown of, of those numbers, right? If we were to go back to the way it used to be, like, I.
Sue, I believe that Sarah has made clear that it would not go back to the way it was. It, it would be something different and she has come up with three options that she'll be bringing in June for all the county commissioners. I appreciate Commissioner Klaus, who is now our representative on the Jazzcom board, coming up to speed the way you are and, and trying to sort it out and bring it back to your support.
Thank you. Yeah, it is a lot of information and thank you, Commissioner Mihia, for that additional context regarding the new hire in the TCOM. I've heard about the TCOM issues, but that was like several months ago and I forgot about that part, so that's something I can talk about with Sarah and try to figure out more info. And I was also wondering, do you know when the new hire, when that position was filled?
The position was filled, it wasn't filled while I was on the board. It was filled, I think, Commissioner Edwards when we were, I was there, so we added full service, we added full service in 2021. And then after they didn't fill that position up and I was there for an additional year and then, so it was last year, sometime last year when the position was.
Last year.
Late last year.
Right, and Sarah has been in the last two briefings, bringing data to show that the numbers are improving. And what she told us last time is that this next quarter, when all the, the TCOM issues have been addressed, the person is in place, that those numbers should be even better. So that's what she has signaled. We'll see it when the data comes and it's part of what we're watching.
I mean, the, I just want to, you know, if you don't want to deal with animal calls and you're dealing with some of the animal calls, it's gonna be easy to complain about the time that they're taking up or whatever, but if it's, if you take that baseline, whatever that is, and you add 638 calls to it, it's gonna be a lot worse. So I mean, the fact that the problem isn't solved from somebody's perspective doesn't mean that there isn't a tangible value to what we're paying for or doing. It's been complicated by the fact that they had to return money. They couldn't actually provide this, the, the upgrade because of post-COVID, you know, factors, but I just don't want to get to a point where we're just flopping back to where we were and we didn't solve anything. Because I have a feeling that when things get, when the dust settles on this, you know, sheriff's doing this much that they don't want to do, but if we don't pay for the, they'll be doing this much that they don't want to do. And the difference between here and here is value, is value, it's money, it's, there's something to it. They're still not going to be happy because they're still doing this amount, whether it's a horse or a, an angry, a biting situation, but you know, the difference between this and this is still the value to the county and I don't want to just, you know, just because somebody's always frustrated because we can't solve the problem. I don't think this is a solvable problem, so we just have to pick the best of the not-so-perfect options. And I don't, I'm not sure what that is yet.
Don't have an answer to that. I did, at the board's request, ask the city managers about their experience and they said that they are extremely happy with the services and that they receive no calls, but they acknowledge that they're not dealing with large livestock, you know, livestock. Like we are in the county.
Yeah. All right, well, more to come on that. Thank you, Commissioner Klaus. You had another one?
For sure, yeah. Let's see, I also, let me find it. Oh, I attended, let's see if I can find the, I have all my Jazzcom stuff up. Okay, so yesterday, my executive, executive aide and I toured the CPAD office here in the building and did kind of a walkthrough and while we were there, they were getting ready to start their management team check-in, so we attended that and that was really interesting. It was basically a meeting with CPAD leadership to prepare for the week and update everyone and ensure that they're aligned with everything they're doing. I thought it was really helpful and it flowed really smoothly, so I was impressed by that. They talked about the positive transition of the SWAB, which is the Surface and Stormwater Advisory Board, to what they're calling RAB, which is the Water Resources Advisory Board, so they're making that transition. And more logistics will be coming to the board when that's ready. So that was a good meeting to attend. Are there any questions about that? Oh, another cool thing is they talked about the RAC Historic Commission kiosk. Construction is starting on that this week and that's in collaboration with the City of Lacey, so I thought that was exciting.
Cool.
And then my last thing is there's an Olympia Indivisible event this Saturday at Traditions Cafe from 12 to 115 and I'll be a panelist on that event. It's a Gen Z power-up is what it's called and it's related to get out the vote to try to get more young people to vote. So I thought that was really cool. And that's all I've got.
Saturday is very busy.
Yeah, I'm going to like four things.
Day and it's gonna be beautiful. We got women voters, luncheon. And the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Event are all on my calendar for Saturday, so.
Me too. And there's another evening event I was just invited to. I think it's the Pizza Clutch is having a meeting that evening.
On Saturday?
Their gala.
Oh, we can.
Yeah.
It's Saturday night.
So it's a busy day.
Okay, any other commissioner items? Okay, then we're adjourned. We're back at 2:00 PM for our board meeting.